May, March thirteenth, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, which permits uh public meetings to be conducted remotely. Um using a conference such as Zoom. In addition, I am told that our meeting is live streamed tonight on Woburn Public Media YouTube channel, as well as Woburn Public Media um channel. So going forward, this meeting will be recorded. I'm recording it right now. This meeting is being recorded, so if your if your face is being shown on the screen, then it's very likely your face will be recorded. In addition, any comments, because we are permitting public comments tonight, will become part of the public record. And the school committee will um here and as well as the public who is ever listening will hear your commentary. Um on that, I will accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open.
Good job.
Second.
Okay, I it I have a motion to open the public hearing on the school committee fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. And I have a second by Mr. Kissel. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so we are now open for our public hearing on our fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. I do have two people that contacted me um through email. You could contact me through email and I'm also in in a moment going to accept um on the spot that uh chat requests as well. Um Mary Bonasori. Excuse me, Mary Bonasignori. If you're here.
Come on, Ellen, you can do it. Let me put my video on.
I'm right here.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, do you want me to go?
Yes, oh, and it just giving everybody a warning as well as you, Miss Bonasignori. Um, the school committee cannot respond to public comments. We can only hear public comments and then we can deliberate after upon what you said. Um, just so everybody knows, it's kind of awkward sometimes they speak and then we can't speak back. So um, please go ahead.
Okay, um, so for those of you that don't know me, uh, my name is Mary Doherty Bonasignori. I'm a lifelong resident of Woburn. Um, I'm taxpayer, a fifth grade teacher at the Malcolm White, and I have a child who attends Woburn Public Schools. I wanted to speak at this meeting tonight to just give some insight on how important class size is. Um, I understand that at this juncture, we're not sure what classrooms are going to look like in the fall. But I did want to let you know that the start of this particular school year was very, very frustrating and very unsettling for my students, their parents, my teaching partner, and me. On September fourth, the day before school started, um, our fifth grade classes did not have five empty seats that should have been allotted for move-in students. And by September twenty-third, I was at capacity. Um, it was not till the middle of October that we were told that we were going to get a third, fifth grade teacher. Um, and so on November twenty-seventh, right before Thanksgiving, we had to gather the fifth graders together and explain to them that there would be a new teacher in fifth grade and that ten students from my classroom and nine students from the other classroom would have to go into a new teacher's classroom. Given the social emotional state that everybody is super concerned with, um, you know, throughout the last few years, it was pretty devastating to these kids. It was pretty devastating to stand in front of them and have to tell them that they didn't do anything wrong. That, you know, their friends that were in their classroom may not be in their classroom anymore. Um, at that point, to sit there and look and watch fifth graders cry, fifth grade boys with tears streaming down their face, um, frankly, it just stunk. And so um, we finally got the process rolling and by December second, we had a third, fifth grade teacher. So at that point, we had students for three months and then had to take them out of our classrooms and place them into another classroom. I am aware of the fact that we can have twenty-eight students in our classes, um, which is something that I will be negotiating. But just to give you a realm of what it looked like on the day of the Alice training, I had students who could not get out of my classroom because they tripped over each other, not because they were running or fooling, but simply because there was too many students in the classroom. I just wanted to make this point to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. Um, the Malcolm White can be a very transient school. We do have a lot of students that move in and out. And I wanted to make sure that there are at least five seats at the beginning of this particular school year. If not more, if it's remote learning, because trying to watch twenty-eight students on Zoom is probably almost impossible as trying to watch twenty-eight students physically in your classroom. But I just wanted to make sure that um, something like this doesn't happen again because it was just unsettling at the beginning. My partner and I didn't know, should we switch classes with each with each other? Should we not switch classes? And then at that point, you know, the students were not getting the academic support that they needed. To give twenty-eight students that type of academic support was almost impossible. So I just wanted to make myself heard and just let everybody know that, you know, that is a situation that does come up. And we're looking at this budget here and there's no extra money in it for teachers to make sure that a classroom size like this doesn't happen again. I just wanted to make sure that there is some type of, you know, awareness through the school committee, through the administration, through the parents that are out um in the audience this evening, that they know, um, you know, that something like this could happen. It did happen this year, um, and it was very, very unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty Bonasignori. I really appreciate your comments. Um, um, Ms. Locke, Barbara Locke.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen, for for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, first, my thoughts and prayers are to all of those out there who are dealing with illness and with loss. I just wanted to publicly state that. And as president of the Woburn Teachers Association, I'm gonna speak with some with maybe very unprecedented uh way. But what is an unprecedented these days? I'm really gonna speak tonight with a purpose to give appreciation to our superintendent of schools, Matt Crowley, and our school committee chair, Ellen Ellen Crowley. These are very difficult times to be a leader in their position, but I know firsthand the collaboration, the honesty and the sincerity of their work. They've exemplified it with me at the table over and over during these difficult times. There is no doubt, I can go on and on about the things I think should happen and shouldn't happen. And Ms. Matt, Dr. Crowley knows, we agree to disagree very often, but we do it with respect with each other and with a unity. We still have a long road ahead of us, there's no doubt, and it won't be easy. And we'll probably, again, agree to disagree like we've done. But please know that the Woburn Teachers Association's focus will be one of unity, not only to our members, which I think that's all teachers and unions think that that's what unions are about, but to the Woburn administration and to the students and to the community. I am proud to be a teacher in Woburn Public Schools and work with these dedicated and committed professionals, teachers, parents, nurses, staff workers, admin, school committee members. We are Woburn. And it's gonna be difficult, but I just want um to say that uh, you know, we're gonna go through all these blind items and we're gonna talk the dollar, the dollar, the mighty dollar. And I can tell you, these dedicated and committed professionals, there is no amount you can put on there. Stay safe, stay well, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Locke. Hearing those words of encouragement is deeply appreciated during this time. Okay, so now I'm going to open it up to the um, the public. Well, it is open to the public, those two people that just signed up ahead of time. Um, if you would like to be heard by the school committee, please feel free to send me a private chat. Um, and we will open it up. Not for long, but just to see if anyone would like to speak. This is your time to speak. This is public comment on our budget. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Um, no one has has chatted me. No one has reached out.
Madam Chair, make a motion. We close the public hearing at this time, unless you have any other chat information or emails sent to you.
Um, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mary Bonasignori is waving.
It is me again. Can I ask a question on the um EL part of the budget?
Unfortunately, we can't respond because what your your question wasn't on the on the budget. Uh, perhaps you could send me a uh message to me and I can um have someone reach back to get your question answered.
Okay.
I didn't say it very well. So tab me and I will make sure the administration answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so did I did I see Alyssa Miltow? Did she ask to speak?
Hi, Ellen. It's Alyssa.
Hello, Alyssa.
Actually had emailed you a letter from us. We weren't sure whether, I don't actually have the letter. We thought it was, you were just gonna be reading like last week.
No, I can certainly enter your, if you prefer, I can certainly enter the letter that you sent me as um, as part of the public record, Ms. Miltow.
I, I'll paraphrase with it because I had edited. Um, I think want to just, again, you know, thanks you all for all the work that you've been doing. Um, and then we wanted to just say, we recognize that the um, Maureen is just doing an amazing job and working really hard and it was just a request for um the consideration of getting her more support in another level of administration for um special education office, just between Maureen and the the chairs, and then only two um people in the office, the administrative assistants helping her. Uh, we definitely see that there are places where things could be more efficient if there was another layer to help her out, things that um don't necessarily need to go to her attention and take a lot of her time uh could quickly be taken care of if there was another layer. That isn't, sorry, I can't, I just don't have the letter with me.
Oh, Ms. Miltow, I I could see that I I did receive uh.
I'm sorry, Ellen, I can't hear what you're saying.
Testing, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I can.
Um, I I am acknowledging that we that the school committee did receive a letter from um Special Education Parent Advisory Committee tonight at seven twenty-eight PM. Um, I can certainly forward that to the school committee and I'll accept a motion to make that part of the public record.
So move, Madam Chair, make that permanent part of the record from the special ed pack of Woburn.
And I have a second on that. Uh, any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm. Ms. Chisholm.
You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan.
In favor, yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so that that letter will be entered into the public record as well, obviously, as Ms. Miltow's comments, um, to sort of summarize that letter. Okay.
Ellen, can you hear me? Mayor.
The mayor.
Yes.
Can you hear me? I like, you know, I've been sitting here. I think it's like I should talk and and you and I have had a number of discussions on the budget. Um, you know, I've talked to Matt Superintendent Crowley a number of times about the budget. Uh, you you know, and everybody who's listening knows about um the issues facing not only the city, but the state as far as uh drastic reduction in revenues. Um, you know, we're very supportive of the schools, but you know, in listening to you um getting feedback about the budget that that you guys have kind of put in front of the public uh is not, you know, what we've been talking about. Um, specifically not what I've been talking about to the superintendent and you and I, our last conversation, Ellen. You know, the city stands uh ready, willing, and able to support the schools like we have in the past. Um, and I've talked to you specifically about the receipts that we're gonna be um down this year and and uh I'll go over them with you right now if you don't, if you don't already know them. Uh, local receipts uh are gonna be down six million dollars this year. Those local receipts are made up of meal stacks, hotel motel, excise, uh, building uh building fees, state aid. Um, we're looking at uh a modest production of two and a half million dollars. Uh, that's about eight and a half million dollars that we're not gonna be have having to use in our revenue stream to match up with the budget. So, you know, with that being known, um, people keep saying, well, you've got to use free cash, you've got to use free cash. And we, as I say, we stand ready, willing, and able to do that, and we have a plan to use our free cash. Um, but, you know, free cash is used as a bridge to get through this budget and to get to next year. And next year, we're not gonna see um a return to the receipts that we have this year either. So we're gonna be down not only this year, but next year and maybe the following year, because I don't think any of us have a crystal ball to know, you know, where this recovery is going. There's also gonna be a major issue facing facing the city uh next fiscal year when we start looking at our real estate taxes. And uh, the problem that that we're gonna see is uh the businesses that we rely on, uh, the real estate tax, the commercial property tax that we rely on uh is gonna be drastically impacted by reduction in values. And the values of the the property is driven by uh, you know, who's who's renting the property, who's using the property. And again, we're being warned you you know, by many of the analysts who tell us that those values are gonna go way down. And when that happens, we're gonna have a a greater crap cash crunch than we have right now. So, a- and we're not the only city, we're not the only town facing that. I know you've read the papers and people have seen what's happening in some of our neighboring communities about what they're doing with teachers. And we're at a point, as I said, um, I I think we're we're being very responsible. Uh, we don't know what schools are even gonna look like come September. Uh, there could be, you know, we could continue remote learning, we could have some hybrid of that, and and if we're lucky, we'll be back uh to full to a normal session, which I I don't think any of us think is gonna happen. Um, but we will have to be ready. We'll have to be nimble and adjust uh to the changes and and maybe some additional costs. If we, again, as I say, we we understand the importance of that and we'll be ready to do it. But when we look at the budget, your budget has gone up, not down and not cut. When I hear people talk about cuts, uh, it it to me, it's a little perplexing because um the budget goes up. It 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 never goes down in the city. And and what we're talking about from the city side is something in the area of, you know, from the city's outlay, about three point eight percent increase. And when you add on top of that, the five hundred thousand that we're getting from the feds, that's actually a four point four point or four point five percent increase. Again, that's a four point five percent increase, not a decrease. We're increasing, uh proposing increasing um funding to the schools. So i- it's it's not, it shouldn't be a surprise, Ellen. I know it's not to you because we talked about it and you talked to me and said, we're gonna get this budget under four percent.
I thought we were going to get the budget to four percent.
You said you were gonna get it under four percent. You have not done that. Your budget is is in excess of that. And that's why I say I I, you know, you, I don't, I I'm trying to say we're gonna be very supportive and we're gonna be very uh nimble. But as we set this budget, we do have to, we we do have to look at what we see for receipts coming in. And we are, the city is committing its reserves to help not only the school budget, but also the city budget bridge this time where we don't have the receipts coming in. And we and we do understand that's what that rainy day fund is for. But that rainy day fund is also to cover our cash flow when we don't have the um revenues coming in from the regular players. Like, even though we're sending out tax bills, not everybody's gonna be paying their taxes. Will we ultimately get those taxes years from now? But we may not, this year, we may not get them the following year. Um, but we're gonna need our reserves to cover that time when revenues aren't coming in. So, you know, I I do wanna say that I I, from the city side, we're being very respectful to the needs of the school department. And uh, you know, just wanna just want to express clearly my position and where we stand.
No, and I I do appreciate, because we have met several times, we tried to, um, you know, a a five point nine increase budget was presented and that, of course, was difficult for the city to uh support. So the school committee was always going to look at a four percent budget. Um, we, it's difficult for us to go underneath that without having.
But you're not at four percent, Ellen. You're you're at, you're.
We're at four point two eight four.
No, you're not, you're not including that five hundred thousand dollars that that's buried in the budget. That's another point, six point seven percent. You're you're right up at five percent. And even even in great times, that would be a a very generous budget. And we're not in normal times here. And I I know people know that. When you look out, you look outside, people don't have jobs. Uh, businesses have not been open. I mean, this is, this is a difficult time. And what I'm trying to say is, the city is stepping up and using our free cash to get to that point where we hope things do get back to normal.
I I.
Budget, the budget that 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 we're putting in front of you is three point eight percent plus that five hundred thousand that's been, that's in your budget that you're not revealing to the public. That's another point six percent. So you.
You know, I I don't appreciate, you know, if you field that to the public, we went through that, we did get CARES Act funding.
Yeah.
That's going.
Point of, point of order, if I may, um, could could we um close the public hearing and then have a discussion with the mayor as a committee as a whole?
Sure.
That's fine. Thank you.
So make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that motion? I have a motion to close the public hearing. Wait, before I do that, is there anybody else? Um, that would like to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On the motion, I know, I appreciate Dr. Wells's concern here. Just uh, people may be waiting or if anybody indicated to you or not.
No, I have nobody waiting in the chat to speak.
Okay, so he wants to close it permanently and then discuss things with the mayor because I don't, that's fine. I didn't know if he was gonna just close it completely and no one that's waiting to speak. Or they don't, anybody else doesn't doesn't recognize we spoke uh pre speaking after the mayor then.
I have no one else waiting in the queue. That was his first intention to speak.
All right, then I'm uh, I'm in favor of the motion closing the public hearing. Thank you for that classification.
I have a roll call vote on that, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier. Ms. Cormier.
Calling, you're muted.
I know, I'm getting there. Yes, please.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan.
In favor, yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. Okay, so the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget is officially closed. We will now open our meeting for a um school committee meeting. We will now call to order the school committee for June first, twenty twenty. Name. Roll call.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan.
No.
Dr. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. Okay, so this is the budget deliberation upon the, after closing the public hearing on the budget, I'd like to recognize the mayor, Scott Galvin.
Thank you, my left.
I thought he was gonna stick around. We could have a discussion.
I just saw Scott Galvin left on the screen.
Oh.
Matt, would you like to text him and see if he's coming back?
Well, I believe he's made his point to the committee and to the public that were on the call tonight.
Well, I was, Madam Chairman, what I was hoping to get up was a final um number from the mayor, because there seems to be some just, you know, um, confusion.
Well, right, it seems to be. All right, this is the first I'm hearing about it.
Yep, three point eight is what he said.
But I'm not sure if that was counting the five hundred thousand or after the five hundred thousand, that's the.
First I'm hearing about it.
Oh. All right.
Okay, so first topic is budget deliberations and debate. Um, freshman athletics.
Yeah, yeah. Good afternoon, good evening, Miss Madam Chair and members of the committee. I believe I followed the proper rules and regulations to submit in my request after last week's meeting to reconsider my vote on freshman sports. And at this time, I make a motion uh to reconsider my vote regarding that matter, please, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I I'm told that that motion is not necessary because it's it's a budget and things are always changing in the budget. So you can go ahead and um make a motion regarding freshman athletics. Um, I believe, are people here to present on this topic?
Looking for Jim Duran?
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't see him.
He's there, he's muted.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Okay, so.
I'm actually, I'm here, thank you.
Okay.
Um.
Would you like to recognize in this in this discussion from the school committee, Mr. Duran?
Okay, um, I'm basically just here, um, you know, I was asked to make a cut and my cut was freshman sports. Um, I I I, anything else in in my budget, athletic budget, is really everything that we have to have, right? So we have to have buses, we have to have officials. All those things are um necessities. So uh with that, I don't really have anything else to cut, but uh we went with freshman sports. It's something that we didn't wanna have cut, but that's something that we put out there hoping that it wasn't going to be cut. So that's something that um, you know, we, we're gonna revisit it. Um, you know, we we would love to do that. There's, you know, we do have some sports that um the last couple of years, we haven't filled. Um, we haven't been able to field teams. Um, our field hockey team hasn't had a a freshman team uh been able to, we've we've tried over two years. Um, and then also softball uh is another freshman sport that we we have in budget that uh we haven't been able to field a team over the the last couple of years. We're hoping to field a team next year. Um, but if that's, if if we were able to pick and choose, um, if we haven't been able to field a team the last two years, maybe we wouldn't be able to field a team next year. So if we were able to cut down on either side on, you know, what the number actually has to be, um, those two sports might help us. Maybe there's another sport that we can, we can uh, we can uh look at to opportunities. Busing, uh, maybe in the fall, we might not even have busing if we have sports. Uh, we might not be able to get on buses and travel to games. Those are some of the things as athletic directors in the league we've been looking at. So um, we don't have any answers until the time comes and you guys, I know you guys know, because you guys are in the same situation uh trying to figure out, you know, what direction we're going in.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Um, Mr. Mulrennan, would you like to be heard on this motion?
Yes, if I could, Madam Chair. First of all, uh, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, this is.
Sorry, I know, yes. Mr. Mulrennan, would you like to be heard?
I would be, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I want to appreciate, uh, thank and appreciate Mr. Durant's comments and uh appearance at tonight's meeting. As we know, last time we met over this topic, it was uh discussed that perhaps a freshman athlete could try out for other sports and make a JV uh, you know, squad or perhaps a varsity squad depending on the sport. And uh, you know, after I slept on it the following night, I thought about it thinking that, you know, as we discussed that evening also, some of the savings, obviously, the the young girls hockey team didn't go to the Garden. We had no spring sports. So I thought in my head, there's some savings there. There would have been officials for sports we would have had. There would have been busing. So uh, you know, at that time, I thought, you know what, can we get a little bit of money back towards freshman sports and engage in that? I think, Madam Chair, you also uh should have received two letters uh from two different coaches. And in a moment, I'll add to those into the permanent record. But uh, my intention was to try to at least get something so that, as we all know, once you take it out, it's so difficult to get it back in there. And now hearing from the mayor and hearing the budget, you know, reality of what we're gonna be faced with in the next couple of, you know, weeks here. And as Mr. Durant said, we don't know what sports it's gonna look like in the fall. We have no idea. So I guess my intention, besides reconsidering my vote, would also just be reinstate some funding, not zero it out and eliminate the freshman sport category in the event that perhaps something does turn our way. Perhaps the teams come up with their own kind of fundraising every uh opportunities that, you know, going through the proper channels of Mr. Durant and us, uh, we could reinstate some of the freshman programs and the kids would get an opportunity at a freshman level. Again, the unknown. These four freshman kids, ninth graders, are gonna be entering up that building in Woburn Royal High School, we hope, in September. Uh, with, you know, they haven't had their freshman night. We all know how successful those programs are, uh, even the tour of the. Uh, even the tour of the building, I think some of these kids really, really need a sport, need an activity, need something to do. Especially after what everybody's been going through the last couple of weeks and months. So uh, my intention was to try to, you know, get a little more money in there. But I'd be happy just to find a small amount, a number, you know, Mr. Durant could come up with just to tell us to reinstate a little bit in the in the budget back. To have some sort of sport so we can have it there in the event that coaches and parents can at least develop some sort of funding on their own, so. Those are the points I wanted to make, Madam Chair. And also, if I could, I make a motion to enter those two letters that you received uh, from Coach Belcher as well as Coach Roy on this topic. And that's uh, about all I have for tonight. Thank you very much and thank Mr. Durant as well.
Thank you. I have a motion to submit letters from Jack Belcher and Scott Roy to the school committee to the public record.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan?
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes. So those two emails, which I will say, just to summarize, are certainly supportive of Mr. Mulrennan's um, initiative here tonight. Uh, to reinstate freshman athletics after it was cut by the school committee in our last meeting. Um, and it is part of the budget tonight for a public hearing is not included um, freshman sports. So, Mr. Mulrennan, are you making any further motions on this?
Uh, at this time, Madam Chair, just make a motion, we uh, add freshman sports with a dollar fee or a thousand dollars, please? Just to keep it on the budget item and just for discussion purposes, perhaps, I don't know, maybe down the road, something could be all about it.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to add a thousand dollars to the freshman sports, to the athletics. Budget as a line item for freshman sports. Do I have a second? No, second.
Second. Second.
I have a second on the motion. Any discussion on that?
Uh, Madam Chairman? I want to discuss, Madam Chairman?
Yes. This is Dr. Wells. I was looking at you.
Sorry, uh, I just, it's not clear to me what the purpose of this motion is except to tie up a thousand dollars of the budget, which we're gonna have to cut, obviously, after the mayor's statements. Appreciate, you know, you know, the thoughts about freshman sports, no one wants to cut freshman sports. But essentially, if we don't, you know, if we look at the budget and as Mr. Durant mentioned, that's what he determined he could cut from his thing. Otherwise, we have no cuts to athletics. We've made cuts to our academic programs, our support of the buildings and so forth. And it just, you know, it doesn't make much sense to me um, in this hard time. You know, Mr. Durant said he was given, you know, what he thought he could do without. And this is what, this is what kind of hard choices you have to make in an economic situation like this. So I just see no purpose in just putting a thousand dollars in.
Okay, Dr. Wells. Yes, Mrs. Chisholm?
I I've always supported athletics all the way through and it's very important to have. Tana Pride show and kids get to be involved in sports and I think that it does help. But unfortunately, we're gonna have to make some serious cuts. And as as athletic director, he thinks that this is something he can do. And the only problem I would have is putting a thousand dollars and it says freshman sports are now put back in. Parents are gonna assume that everyone is put back in and we're gonna be having some parents able to fundraise for the kids. And other parents not being able to do a freshman team. And I think that would just bring more inequity to the sport, to the athletic department. I just um, I wish it wasn't so. But again, if if we're gonna have to cut probably another $500,000 from this budget, I think we have to make some tough decisions. So, sorry about that.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mr. Kissel?
Yeah, I. Through the chair to uh, Mr. Durant, is he still on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, the other night, I I voted in favor of keeping it uh, completely, you know, the 77,000. But I had a couple of questions and I'm not sure if we got the answers, now you're here. Uh, with the JV and varsity, of course, the freshmen, if they're they're good enough, they can play on it. So my question was, you know, normally there's cuts made at certain teams' levels. And I guess my question would be i- if it was cut, which, you know, without, I made the second and no one else did, so I'm assuming it's not going to. Uh, pass, but we'll see. Um, would there be, the coaches be open to kind of opening up a few more spots? At least the kids could practice, at least the kids could be, you know, on the sidelines, depending on the bench, that kind of thing, just a. Would there be that opportunity and and being that you're the boss, I figured you might have a little more insight on that.
Yeah, I I think, I think uh, teachers, coaches would open up different spots for them. My biggest concern, and of course, everyone's gonna say because it's football, right? So, but football is the big thing because you're a fresh, as a freshman coming in, you're 14 years old, you're gonna be playing. If you're playing JVs, you're going to be playing against possibly a 17-year-old junior. So that is an issue. So I think that's where you come into having issues with freshman football. Other sports, you can make a couple of, you know, choices. The big thing is, is having freshman sports is, it's an easy transition from the kids from middle school coming up as a as a fall sport. To kind of get to go kids and they start a little bit earlier, they, you know, they they getting into the um, the for the beginning of the year, so.
Yeah, and I'm not done, I read both letters and, you know, you and I have talked over the years, it's it's not a question in my mind of whether freshman sports is. You know, it it has a good place at the school. My my main concern is if it fails tonight, just I'm just looking for an answer from you before that. Would the coaches be open to at least opening up some spots? Not necessarily, I know it may be a waste of their time, but maybe just having the experience of being on a JV team and kind of practicing with the kids and maybe keep other younger kids practicing together. You know, different things like that. In other words, kind of, it's a it's a strange time out there, so if we're looking at a total cut. Or the possibility of the coach is saying, hey, it's normally 40 kids on the team, uh, we'll open it up to 50, so there's 10 more spots that, you know, we, if if the kids want to practice and be part of the team, they're still part of the experience. That's all.
Of course, we're gonna try to keep as many kids involved as we possibly can, that whatever it takes, we'll try to do that. You know, if it is, if we get approval, if it does get shut down, if we can go back to the school committee and try to get approval, that if we could fundraise to. To uh, to keep a program, however they can do that, that would be great too, that, you know, if we could fundraise for some type of program and. And um, solicit money and try to keep those programs going, that's what we'd try to do also, we try to do.
And I, and I think that to to Mr. Mulrennan's point, I think, you know, the thousand dollars keeps it there. Obviously, we don't want to mislead anyone in letting them think that the teams are all gonna be available. But if that's, you know, I don't know if there's another option besides putting a thousand there as a as a placeholder. So we could fundraise, not us, but the friends of group and so on that want to keep them. Not sure how that all works, so I I guess through maybe through an administrative question, is that something that can be done? Or if we just, it goes away completely, can they still be fundraised and and a and a a team be brought back to play against other league, other cities?
Yes, are you asking me that question?
Yeah, anybody, you know.
Yes, I mean, yeah, if we were to fundraise, we can, we can fundraise through the school. It would have to be uh, approved by the school, the money coming in, so it would all come through the school committee.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mulrennan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't didn't raise my hand yet. Again, I uh, just wanted to reiterate what I said last week, I don't know if you were in the meeting last week, Mr. Durant, but I uh. Reminded the audience and the committee members that years passed, you've always been before us with your budget. You've always advocated on behalf of all of our athletes and all of our student athletes. And you also remind us that a lot of communities around us barely can field a freshman squad anyway, whether it's financial or numbers wise. I didn't know if you wanted to comment along those lines tonight, Mr. Durant or not?
Yeah, I mean, there are teams, you know, we, there's some uh, teams in our league that have. The numbers are going down and we struggle to get the games, but it's not always the case like. Uh, football and the soccer's and the basketballs. Or I know baseball this year, uh, Joe in the middle, uh, Joe Wells, our coach, in the middle of uh. In December, he wasn't sure if he was gonna have numbers for baseball, so, you know, I'm not advocating to cut freshmen. But if that is something that we have to do, but if we could fundraise and and work things out in our own, that if we think we absolutely have to have. Uh, that sport, if we can be open to that, we just don't want to have a closed door by the school committee, we'd rather have a supporting cast. If we could fundraise and do those things, but it all be approved through the school committee before we do any of those those avenues.
Thank you very much, Jim. And also, uh, I reminded Jim that last week when we went through these cuts and saw that and it was, uh, you know, presented by the administration on your behalf. We were at the same time discussing fees. Uh, and as it's come out so far anyhow, there are no fees, there's nothing being assessed, athletics are activities for our students, our families here in Woben. As has been said over and over, we have not been, you know, big fans of those fees, Jim. So I think last week, to have that before us in lieu of fees kind of thing, you know, if if something has to go freshman sports. And obviously, I don't want to speak for the entire group, but I think whatever endeavors or opportunities or thinking outside the boxes. Whatever you can do as athletic director and help out your coaches to do something for the ninth graders in the building, I think it'd be beneficial for all, but uh. I just wanted to make sure it's public, we're spending way too much time on a freshman squad when we have much bigger matters before us, Jim. But I appreciate your time and uh, acknowledging all the committee members this evening, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Wells?
Yeah, I just want, you know, if they want to do fundraising, the only thing you gotta be careful about is making sure that we don't violate any Title IX. You know, in terms of where money's coming from and where it goes to. If we start putting back sports that we've cut, you have to make sure there's equity. So, I just want to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Mrs. Chisholm, did you have further discussion?
I do, um, one, one I would like to ask, Mr. Durant, did you think you were incognito as you're in John, you borrowing somebody's uh?
Of course, I can't afford it.
Okay, John, I love, I have a question for you. I just want to remind people that, you know, that's, girls hockey started as a fundraising group, you know, when they they came to us years ago and so did volleyball, I believe, started as fundraising. So, you know, it can happen, I hate to have parents have to do more for this, but again, at this time, when we're gonna be cutting deep into academics. And I I just hate to, but if we could even add maybe um, a dollar, because I think we did that with buildings and grounds for Dave for a position and we just had line item there for freshman sports. It might be easier just to, for accounting purposes, if we leave it for a dollar, so that the freshman sports is still in. And maybe that would be easier for counting if if Joe wanted to chime in on that, if that's easier or if it doesn't make any difference.
I guess that's a question for Mr. Lee, correct, Mrs. Chisholm?
Yep, he's jumping on.
Okay, good. I mean, I'd be capricious, you know.
I mean, we did, you're right, Pat, we did the same thing for, for Dave, but. I mean, unless the money's in there, I mean, you you can't spend, I mean, you you put a dollar in for freshman sports, what does that mean for the coaching staff? I mean, does coaching staff get paid?
No, I'm just saying, fundraising, would it be easier to keep track of if they start fundraising and you could put something into that line item?
No, it's not gonna matter one way or another.
Okay.
Still keep track of it.
All right, okay, I just didn't know if it was easier, that's all right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Any further discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote, please.
This is for a thousand?
This is the motion uh, made by Mike Mulrennan and seconded by Mr. Kissel to add $1,000 back into the budget under the line item. Um, of athletics, specifically for freshman athletics. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm? Ms. Cormier?
No.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
No.
Mr. Mulrennan?
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
No.
Ms. Crowley?
No, the motion fails five to two. Um, and just for the public's information, Mrs. Chisholm, could you review fees? I already referred it to finance, but could we have that on for the June 9th agenda? So you can at at least talk about um, an alternative, because I'm hearing that people are into fundraising, but maybe. Maybe it's time to look at fees to save freshman athletics.
Okay.
Just consider it, that that was not an opinion. Okay, moving forward, is the mayor back on this call?
Uh, he, he's not.
Okay. So.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Could the superintendent put up the list of suggested cuts that were discussed at the last meeting so we can review them again in light of the mayor's comments? I just, you know, I can't, I don't have the list in front of me with what, what was left on that list.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question as well.
To me or to the administration, Mr. Kissel?
Just through, through you to anybody. So, so based on the conversation that just happened uh, 45 minutes ago and so, are we looking at getting to 3.8? With 3.8 minus 500,000 or?
That's what we didn't know.
That's what I, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's gonna help us, but he did come back on for a minute. Mayor. Just curious, because, you know, we can cut stuff and then. Still don't really know what we need to be at, I I was confused, I I didn't know anything about a number until he came on tonight.
Madam Chairman, it's, it seems to me, we gotta get, we should get, try to get to at least 3.8.
Okay. What does that equate to, does anyone have a number?
Under 320,000.
Okay.
Are we able to put up on the share on the screen the things that we reviewed last time, but we didn't cut?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you.
The other, the other thing that I would um, respectfully say is that um. We. We may need some more time to, I mean, if, but we may be out of time, I don't know.
So, I I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to be clear, if you guys, I I don't want to be, if you've closed the public hearing, we shouldn't be debating, I, this is, you, you can't do that, that's. If we want to, if you want to come to my office and and debate, we can, but we're talking about this, but if you've closed the public hearing. What, you've closed the public hearing? That's what you posed for the meeting for.
Well, we have a, we have a budget deliberation on the hearing. We actually have a school committee meeting ongoing right now where the topic is budget deliberations. And we're hearing from you because this is the first time that I'm hearing that we have a 3.8 number. So, that, we have a 4.284 budget that we are, we were ready to pass.
You actually, you actually have a greater budget than that, it's close to 5%.
No, I I, I understand that, but we had a budget that we we built a consensus around and now.
You never talked to me, Alan, you built, you built your consensus around your own consensus.
Well, that's what we're supposed to do.
No, no, when you, when you have a number, we've done this, this, we we continue to do this year after year. And and I I appreciate Dr. Crowley, the position he's in. So he comes, every year, he has to come up with a budget that that, just that he has to present to school committee, that it's the ultimate budget that includes everything everybody wants. And that, that's why we we put these expectations out there, it's pretty difficult to get down off of those expectations. And now, we we, we're talking about a budget that is extremely, extremely generous, but because you've built a consensus without, you've built a consensus among yourself.
Well, that's what we do, we're the school committee.
Yeah.
You listen to administration.
And I said, and I set the spending limits and then that budget goes down to the city council and they have to approve it or not approve it. I I get it, I get the position you're in, but you, you were given different options uh, by the superintendent a couple of weeks ago. I was rather surprised that you didn't take any of them, in fact, you added everything in.
We did.
Far exceeded any, any, any discussions you and I had.
These say, John, we we do not lay up parale- paraprofessionals.
Madam, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If, if, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think the idea is that um, after the public discussion, the school committee can review its budget based on the input on the discussion. And I think that's what we're trying to do. And I think we're trying to take into account your comments. And let's see what we can do before we send it down to you. I don't think it's tied to that, that particular figure after the public discussion, otherwise, what's the purpose of the public discussion? The public discussion is to give input from the public before the committee makes its final vote. So I think that's why we're trying to do that.
And I get that, John, but you clearly had, you clearly opened it up, people spoke and then you asked, does anybody else want to speak? And I'm not. And then you asked, does anybody else want to speak? And I'm not, I'm not opposed to, but I think. You know, that's, that's how the process went, and you closed the public hearing and took a vote on it.
But no, we haven't taken a final vote yet, that's what we're.
We voted on this budget, we are in the, we are in the process of gathering information, we heard about freshman athletics, now we're hearing from you. So since you're here, I'm recognizing you, does anyone from the committee have questions for the mayor?
I do.
Yes, Mrs. Chisholm.
So Scott, what's the number you want us to get to? Is it three point eight?
That's the budget, yes.
That's what we have. And when do you need this at the drop dead date? Is it tonight?
Well, I I plan on putting the, I plan on putting a budget to the city council on Monday. And again, we, this is, yeah, Monday.
Well, I would need it before Monday, Pat, I would probably need, you know, Thursday.
Okay, okay.
And again, and again, just, just to be clear, there, this is, this is a budget. And and it's, and I don't want to say it's in flux, but we've talked about this, I've talked about this with the superintendent. That there are so many unknowns going into this next year. And and to be clear, the city is always going to be standing ready uh. To to help out where we can, but this is a budget that is a, is a generous budget, has to be. You know, the, this is where you have to go, but we understand with with COVID nineteen, there could be. There could be many unknowns that pop up between September and and May. And, you know, if we have to deal with them, we will. They may, there may be, your budget may, you may have too much money in your budget, because. Just like this year, you know, there's going to be an excess of 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 money that's not spent. We may go through the same thing next year, that some of the, we might not have school for some extended period of time. So we we're working and we're working to establish a budget that's fair and. Uh but, and I know we we have to all agree that there are a lot of unknowns going into the year.
Yes.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I definitely think this, you know, this is difficult times for all of us, and I think we're all working to do what we can, and I think. We as the committee, we're all citizens of Woburn, and we understand the constraints that every, that the city is facing, and I think we're going to try to do our best. And we'll work with the mayor and the city council going forward. And we appreciate the support we've gotten over the years from both the mayor and the city council, so. If the superintendent maybe has um those, those things that figure again, we can go and review that as a committee.
I think the superintendent was trying to state earlier, Dr. Wells, that he could, he can show us the graphs and we could go at it then.
Okay, what I'm hearing is that this is a, um, and I don't want to say that it was a surprise, because the mayor is is right that. Uh, we have been ongoing and collaborating on the budget. Um, and Dr. Wells is absolutely right that we are all in this together and um I apologize for my. Back and forth with the mayor, it certainly is just, we, the school committee, we're trying to do the best we can. Um, but I understand the guidance from the city tonight.
I think. I appreciate, I I do appreciate your your advocacy, Alan, I really do.
I know you do, and it's, it's fine, I I I appreciate you coming to the meeting. And now, now we have a full picture, now we have that piece of information that the school committee's been asking for. Um, because we just didn't know, we thought four percent was, was right, but you're right, we're at four point two, so anyways. I think we need another meeting. Um, and.
Why don't we just, I can pull up things, Madam Chairman, right, you know, I thought they had it handy, I just wanted everybody to see, but I can pull up. The text that has the things that we can talk about.
Let me hear from the superintendent about whether he wants to, what, what he thinks. So if if the superintendent could give us some feedback, given this state we're in.
Yeah. I think, Dr. Wells, you're right, I I can, I'm I'm finding the previous cuts, but I want to um. You know, we had, we've had a couple folks take advantage of their early retirement within the last couple days. And so, you know, before we go back to the cuts that were proposed, you know, whatever, forty-eight hours ago. Um, I'd like the opportunity to see if there's um through attrition. Opportunities to reduce the budget versus cutting things. And, you know, so that's my opinion, I I can show you the cut list, um. And we'll, we'll, we'll still go back to that. Um, I'll do, you know, whatever the committee wants. Um, the will of the committee will, will follow the direction, just think that um now that we have a clear picture and uh we're all on the same page. I think it'd be beneficial to everybody to, or at least to the administration to have. You know, twenty-four hours to make some thoughtful decisions rather than rushed decisions and. I I think the mayor's absolutely right, um, you know, and I I've been alluding to this throughout. This, this state doesn't have a budget yet, and so there's so many variables here, it's very, very uh tricky and. Um, so I, I want to uh represent the school department to the best that I can and protect the kids to the best that I can. And so rushing through uh through uh right now, I don't think would be the.
Interest of the. Yeah, I I understand, and you know, I don't want to, but I think, you know. You know, there's been discussion throughout this whole budget period about people not wanting to. Make cuts until they heard the final number, and I think we've heard the number tonight. And so I think it behooves the school committee to think hard over these forty-eight hours before we can have our next meeting. About what they want to send to the mayor and the city council.
Madam Chair.
Yes, so uh Mr. Mulrennan.
I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand, but uh in light of what's going on and with the superintendent's input there, uh. Obviously, he's got some incentives there with the teachers, you know, early retirement, perhaps other people are out there. Any opportunity like that, thinking outside the box, uh I know I've seen on our. Our math school, uh school board, school committee's website there, other communities that reached out to their. Teachers unions and other bodies, just to see if there's any consensus there and, you know, something along those lines, anything outside the box, any kind of. Opportunity superintendent could come up with, uh, I'd be more than happy to engage in now that we have a solid firm number from the mayor and. You know, it is crazy, it's, I don't know how many times we've all heard the new normal, unprecedented times and. You know, when are things going to turn around, what's going to happen, those unknowns that. We, the superintendent, and Mayor Galvin, and the entire state and the country, the world are up against. I think if this is what the mayor wants for us to get to, in hopes that, you know, things do turn around, maybe over the summer, maybe things will be better come September and. You know, there'd be an opportunity for us to revisit a lot of these items that, you know, we're going to be missing out on, so. If the superintendent could give us, you know, a little bit of a timeframe, as Dr. Wells said, I know it's a forty-eight hour rule, but uh. I'm more than happy to hear back from the superintendent once he explores, I guess, all in all, any more options, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chairman? Yes. Um, if Scott is still on, I don't know if he's.
Yes.
Okay, I I know that this um school year, we have some savings in that. Is that money that's going to be allowed to like prepaid special ed, or can we do technology out of that? Can we get some?
We, we can talk, we can talk about capital needs, Pat.
Okay.
We could talk about capital needs, I, I know that um. Ellen had scheduled, Ellen and the superintendent had scheduled a um walk of the um. Schools and the conditions, and I know there's, there's some issues there, so, you know, we, we can talk about that, we can talk about technology, yes.
All right, as long as I know that we can use some of that, because I know that we've cut that pretty good, so I just don't want to be. Because as you know, we're going to have to add technology, because if nothing else from this, we found our. Technology and remote learning for our kiddos are behind other districts, so we really need to. Increase that a great deal, so, thank you for that.
Okay, so um I haven't heard it yet, but I believe I'm going to hear a motion to table. Our five of our special meeting agenda. Vote on the school committee fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget.
I'm going to jump, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion based on the input from the public hearing and discussions with the bear that we postponed. Our vote on the final budget uh until we get input from the administration.
Second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion to table the vote for the final vote until we have input from the administration. Um, in a second, any discussion on that motion?
Second, that we have one.
I have one.
Okay, we have a second, so uh, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chisholm.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan.
In favor, yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. That motion passes, so we will not, the public's information, that was a lot of back and forth, but we decided to table the vote, that is the best. Thing for the school district, hearing from the superintendent, um, there may need to be some changes to the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. And we will have a, a final vote on it, but we will also have to post it forty-eight hours again, I think so. Um, I will figure out the procedures around that. Um, moving on.
Forty-eight hours, Madam Chairman, had to do, I think, with when we can schedule a meeting.
But we have to put the new proposed budget on.
I I don't think so, I think. Add a public hearing and based on the input on the public.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
Um, at least that's my interpretation.
Okay, I will sort of look into it, make sure.
Yep.
For that.
Um, I think anytime the mayor's ready to get it, we, we have the opportunity, superintendent can get it to us, and the mayor needs it by Friday, then that's our deadline.
By Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Um, for the public information, it looks like we'll be scheduling that meeting on the fourth. All right, next we have, um, we do have a vote on non-union part-time workers, um, but I will. Yeah, uh, any action on that? I'm going to pass, sorry, going to pass the chair over to my veteran member of the school committee, Mr. Mike Mulrennan to. Um, handle that agenda item.
I'm sorry, I was not muted, is this going to be an executive session, Madam, Madam Chair?
No.
No, it's about the part-time people, just devote to what to do.
Okay, I I believe Ms. Crowley's left the meeting, I hope, so I'll uh. Take over chairman right now, I will allow the opportunity for. Dr. Crowley or any other administrator to comment on this if they'd like. Dr. Crowley, any additional information?
No, pardon me, other than, we've been obviously paying uh folks throughout. And um they've been doing some training, and it's with the hopes that when. We come back better and we're all better, and so um that has been ongoing. Um, that's the, that's the additional information I could provide.
Okay, any comments or concerns, Dr. Wells for uh superintendent, I believe.
Is it, I hate to bring it up again, was there any discussion with the mayor, I know that was an issue when we originally discussed it. And I don't know if there was any further discussions with the mayor regarding this issue.
Unfortunately, he did dip out of this meeting.
Well, I was one, I was, I was asking that to the administration. I don't, just to, just to, just to be sure.
I mean, on a, on a uh. On a, the quick answer is not recently, obviously, we were trying to stay in line.
Right.
You know, with the city. So I'm not totally sure what the city, uh, where the city is on it.
Any further questions or concerns for the superintendent regarding this matter? I can't see the screen, so you have to shout out your name, I'm sorry. Recognize anyone? Mr. Chisholm, go ahead.
So we've been paying them all along, but are they, actually, they're doing something in order to promote something for the school system that would be worthwhile? Could you continue paying them? Because it's worth ten thousand dollars, is that what we're talking about, which is next week? Because we'd be paying them for the, the remaining, what, three weeks of the school year? How many days do we have left? I don't even know how many days we have.
Little over three weeks, right?
It's still fifteen days?
The la- the last day of school is the twenty-fifth, yes, but.
Okay, you all said, Ms. Chisholm, I'm sorry, Ms. Cormier, do you have your hand raised, like, looking at the screen, yeah, I can't see that.
Nope, no, just responding to Ms. Chisholm.
Any other committee members at this time have comments or concerns regarding this matter with the superintendent or any other administrator?
I'll make a motion that we.
Okay, Dr. Wells, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the spending on the part-time workers to the end of the school year. Based on the input that they are doing productive activities that are beneficial to the school department.
Sorry.
Oh, so Dr. Crowley, go ahead, Dr. Crowley. Is there a second on that motion, I'm sorry?
Second.
Second, uh, motion made by Dr. Wells, that we continue payment of those personnel, second by Mr. Kissel, comment, please, Dr. Crowley.
Mr. Leah, do we have any idea what the amount? Just out of curiosity.
No, I don't, not off the top of my head, Matt, I'll have to see, I'll have to get you that number tomorrow.
All right.
Any further discussion regarding this matter? Seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call vote on this, Mr. uh, Dr. Crowley, please, roll call on the matter to continue payment of those personnel. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsy.
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan.
Yes, in favor.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Yeah, at this time, if someone could notify, uh, that motion passes, if someone could notify uh chairperson. Chairwoman, Ms. Crowley, do we turn to the meeting? Okay, Ms. Crowley, we took our vote, uh, and you're back to your championship position, continue.
Thank you, Ms. Mulrennan, um, just looking forward to future agenda items.
Let me give us the budget, and then the budget after that.
Well, I just wanted to raise two, two things that need to be done um fairly soon. Uh, efficiently is the superintendent's evaluation and um. I believe the superintendent in the school committee will be entering into contract negotiations. Um, so those two, just want to keep those two things on the front burner. For upcoming meetings, and then Ms. Chisholm, your subcommittee is going to present its recommendations on. Um, athletic fees.
Right.
Which is, which is um could be interesting, given what the news that we just heard. Um, we do have executive session, I'm sorry, future agenda items, any other committee members?
Madam, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, I think it's imperative that um we have um some kind of ongoing discussion. In concert with the administration about what we, what are we doing to prepare for the fall? And so it can either, you know, it can be resource subcommittee or however you want to do it, but I think. We're going to have to have ongoing discussions throughout the summer and in what we're preparing and what we're thinking about, so. So I think that should be, we should decide how do we want to do it? How do we want to keep the committee informed? How do we want to help the administration prepare? For the unknown, so to speak, and have some open discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, and I do think members should be prepared to meet over the summer, because there could be, um, there will be. Likely some changes that we might need to adjust to, so I would say that we probably need to have summer meetings. If not, then I'm sure resources and finance, of course, would meet over the summer. Um, but again, I think, you know. I think, that's my, that's my response to that, is I think we should plan on meeting in the summer.
But I specifically think we have to have that as a, a working, a working group, for lack of a better term. You know, involving some school committee members with the administration, obviously, the administration takes the lead, but I think the committee's got to be in there on the ground floor. You know, I appreciate all the work that the administration did, you know, dealing with this face, you know, in the beginning, but I think it. It will help them more if the committee's involved, and so they can give guidance about public perception and so forth.
Regarding that motion, we're got, regarding that matter, Madam Chair.
Yes, future agenda items, Mr. Mulrennan.
Yeah, I guess to the superintendent regarding Dr. Wells's comments that. Dr. Crowley, is there another scheduled appointment with Tessie or any coming, coming up from the government people as far as? Your, uh, your guidance from them, just curious.
Yeah, I'm on a, a call tomorrow with the commissioner. And I'm not sure what guidance we're going to get specifically tomorrow. I'm led to believe that state guidance will probably be issued with middle of June is the last I knew, so.
Okay.
It's a, it's a call tomorrow and uh every call allows for more details to emerge.
Of course.
I appreciate that, just uh, and as always, you'll keep us informed, thank you, Dr. Crowley.
Okay, thank you, um, in the. I I inadvertently um missed naming some parents and community members that had sent emails to the school committee. So if it would be okay, I'd like to just name those names, um, as I meant to do it during public hearing, but. Um, given there was a, a little bit of a confusion with the mayor, so um, these names are Emery. So these names are Emery Popilowski, Lisa Lorette, Jennifer Barry, as I mentioned, Jack Belcher and Scott Roy, the entire school psychologist staff, the Katia Bonfetti, Amy Pannacella, Evelyn Riley, Jennifer Baker Jones, Rachel Kuhberry, and Alyssa Miltow. All reached out to the school committee in some level of support, and I have to say that the emails were tremendously positive towards the teaching staff and the administration and to the school committee, so I appreciate those emails. Okay, moving on to.
So, Madam Chairman, another future agenda item?
Yes.
We do have, it's hanging, hanging in the, the wind, which, you know, is our recreation department appointment.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Wells. I'm, I'm thinking it, it might be the June 24th meeting discussion.
I don't even know. I think we have to figure out where that's at. It came about and, and, you know, maybe reach out to the recreation department, see how they're doing their meetings, because we're, you know, all that stuff.
So I'll, I'll plan to update the committee on that on June 24th, at that meeting. All right, so we do, I think, I'm, I'm looking at Dr. Crowley, executive session on the agenda tonight. Do we need executive session, Dr. Crowley?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. That being said, we will adjourn, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
All in favor of the call vote, please?
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Mulrennan?
In favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, and before I call that vote, I just want the public to know that it's very likely we will be meeting on June 4th. But that might change, because we need to schedule that meeting and work with the administration. But that motion passes seven to zero. This, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Yes, good night.
You may want to think about an emergency meeting, if you see if it fits within the guidance.
I, I will definitely check on that, Dr. Wells. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.